A regular council member, City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, October the 14th, year 2019. Moving to our call of order, our city council in this general, except for, uh, I think he stepped out, but he will be here, I see his computer still in place, so we are all in our position with bright and shiny faces. Moving in our agenda to a broken call, which I just completed, and, uh, moving to item number four on our agenda, and I'm using the same agenda that you are essentially. Councilman Little, would you present that?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one citizen who would like to make a comment, Jimmy Davis, please come up to the podium, get your name and address, you have three minutes, I'll let you know, you have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs, Neil, Pearland, 77584. I'm coming to the council this evening to, to give a recommendation for a proposed UDC, uh, change. I live near, near Centennial Park. I love my home, from my front door to the parks, less than a quarter mile. I go to it a lot, I like to walk over there. Right next to Centennial Park, just as south of it, is this really nice new development, first people have moved in, there's still a lot of construction going on, but in the process, they had to clear a lot of land. And, in the clearing of the land, naturally, there's a lot of wildlife that was displaced. Uh, this came to our neighborhood's attention, we're at the closest edge to the park, when for the last several months, we smell skunks in our neighborhood. Seems like almost a nightly occurrence, if you're driving in, 10 o'clock at night, you better make sure your AC's on recirculate, cause if you have it on fresh air, your car's gonna smell like skunk. I have my AC set to turn, to drop down lower for sleeping, about 10 o'clock at night, a lot of nights, I have to turn it off, though, because my neighbor next door, apparently the skunks really like his place, his flower beds, and apparently, they get scared a lot and like to spray, and so the AC kicks on, and all of a sudden, my house smells like skunk. Um, it's sickening, I turn it off, and we just deal with it. Um, I can't really walk over to the park, because it stinks, because the skunks run back and forth, we have one neighbor that said she's actually seen four skunks running through her backyard, coming into it. Um, all this because, you know, the wonderful developers, they, they cleared the land to make these really nice homes for people, but they didn't really think about what it's gonna do to the people around. These are nuisance items. City of Pearland has a policy, animal control, they euthanize skunks if you trap them, they just show up, they give it a shot, kills it right there, they take the body off, you keep the trap, um, if it's your own, they do have them that you can get them as well. What I'm proposing, City of Pearland has a requirement for builders, that when you're going in to build a subdivision, they have to do certain analysis, certain surveys for how you go deal with stormwater. You can't build a neighborhood and make sure you're gonna flood your neighbors, well, that's common sense.
30 seconds.
So we make, make sure they know to do that. I think we need a UDC requirement, that these developers need to have a wildlife impact analysis, determine what's there, maybe it's setting up game cameras to identify what's in the area that you're looking to clear, and then work with the city to get them captured. You're gonna euthanize them anyhow, do it then, don't make people like me not be able to enjoy my home, so when my property tax, uh, bill comes out next time, City of Pearland's gonna get less, cause I'm gonna go dispute it, because I'm sorry, I, I can't even enjoy my home because of the skunks, I can't sell it, who here would wanna go look at a home, and when you step outside, you smell a skunk, oh yeah, this is the place for me. Absolutely not, I ask y'all, I ask two members to take this up, and let's make a change so that these developers can actually make sure, when they're putting in these subdivisions to make this money, that they're actually not just sending a nuisance to somebody else to have to deal with, so we don't have to take actions. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to open, formally open our council meeting. Your please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by Councilmember Perez, and Councilmember Moore, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, if you'll bow your heads with me, um, please Heavenly Father, uh, grace us with your wisdom, as we stand up here and make decisions that we believe to be best for our city and its citizens, please bless those, uh, that are out amongst the community, doing good, please bless our first responders, and please bless all of those that are serving in our military, protecting our freedoms. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one indivisible. I'm really impressed with the attendance here tonight, thank you all for being here, I think it's gonna be an interesting, rather long meeting, I think, at this point. Moving in our agenda to item number five, which would put us into public hearings, none, and sent agenda, or the, the items to be removed from consent agenda have been identified as items A, B, F, and H. And, uh, Councilmember Orlando, would you present the consent agenda with exception of those four items?
Consideration and possible action on consent agenda, um, items number A through K, that's excluding A, B, F, and H, so moved, second.
We have motion and a second, we're in discussions. Staff, have any further comments? Staff, staff, have any particular comments at this point?
None of the ones that are staying.
At this point, okay, we have motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Motion passed, six to zero.
Moving to item A on our agenda, would you present that for us, Councilman?
Yeah, consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash 243, so moved, second.
Motion, second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, item A is a resolution for your consideration, uh, following through on items that are in the, uh, budget, and this is for two replacement dump trucks, we are going off of the HGAC, uh, joint buy board, uh, these trucks are outfit for our needs, uh, streets department primarily, uh, items that have been put off for several years, so, uh, ask for your consideration and move forward on that.
Councilor, have a question or comment on the staff report?
I do, I just some, uh, questions on, on there, um, the trucks that, uh, went out for us, Peterbilt, which are fairly expensive trucks, on there, and I just going through the bid items on there, and I was just, you know, a little bit of concern about it, and I think I mentioned on some of the other stuff we got that on this, and we're getting, uh, AM FM radios, $324, chrome air horns, $466, and, uh, speakers, 118, and the mirrors are chrome, which are, are $610, and a stainless steel bumper, 532, um, I just think, you know, that's, uh, and the sun visor, stainless steel, uh, sun visor, $193, I just think, you know, for the, the trucks, uh, you know, I don't know what happened to Chevrolet International, or our Ford, um, on bidding these, to go to Peterbilt, which is usually a long distance haul type truck, but then, you know, to come in, and, and really for the, what we're looking at on there, a total of, uh, $279,834, and the numbers I just called out probably are not that big, uh, as compared to the total price of those, but I just think a lot of things were, uh, I don't know if we really looked at everything on there, or if it has to come that way, or, or not, but I, it's, it's just a concern when we're, um, you know, air horns being chrome, have to be chrome, uh, you know, and AM FM radios put in, on that, I guess, you know, because I doubt if any of the trucks that we're using are long haul type trucks, I mean, I would think they're very short distance trucks on, on hauling, but, uh, that was just my question on there, I thought, you know, on the dollars of it, I, I thought it was, uh, I didn't know if it just comes standard with the vehicles, but it evidently not, if it's a additional cost to get them put on there, but, uh, I think, you know, after everything we've done so far, I think, you know, trying to save a little bit of money on the budget, uh, is something that we really need to look at doing.
The other council reports or comments? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Staying, I just walked in.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion passes, six to one.
Councilmember Orlando, would you move to item number, number B?
Sure, consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash 251, so moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
So, item, uh, B Baker is a, on-call services, uh, for our sewer and water line, uh, team, uh, they provide, uh, this renewal, they provided, uh, good service for us in the past, it's an on-call item for large items, I remember specifically, there's a large break on, uh, on, uh, Broadway, and, uh, we could not handle that with our own team and, and equipment, and so Texas Pride was out there, so, uh, this is again, something we positioned ahead of time for services that need, uh, when we're not able to deal with it ourselves.
Okay, Councilor, have a question or comment on staff report?
The only thing I had on there is, uh, yeah, on, on that item B, is to see why others didn't bid on it, I don't know, seemed like this was the only bid that you've got on there, and I didn't know why, you know, what made everybody else not bid on this item, or if we even checked to see.
We put it out there through the normal channels, I mean, uh, I don't know what else we can do for answering an unknown when people don't, but, uh...
Okay, but it just seemed like to me that, you know, there'd be plenty of other people around to bid on it, and I, I didn't know why they wouldn't, uh, wouldn't bid on them, okay.
Councilor, any further comments, questions? Here you're done, Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Okay, Orlando, would you present item F for our consideration?
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash 259, so moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Again, this is a, a buy board, uh, purchase agreement, uh, for replacements and some upgrades to tasers that, uh, are outfit for our police force. Nothing else?
Councilor, any questions, does, does complete staff report? Councilor, have a question or comment on this item?
Yeah, I do, Mayor, and it's not that, uh, it was just not understanding the bid on this thing, it was showed a, 125 tasers for five-year period of time, and the payers, the, uh, unit cost was $262.19, uh, but over five years, the total price comes out $163,868.75, so, what I'm assuming then, that only is not a good thing to do, at 125 tasers that you're having a bid, I mean, on there for five years, but what you're paying is a, a yearly cost, five years of what that amount was, in order to come up to $163,000 for five years. I just, actually, I just had a harder time understanding how this thing was bid, and it was saying it was $262 per unit, 125 units, on there, and so I was wondering how it came out, $163,868, but it showed, I don't know, it's 30 something thousand over, uh, each year. So the units, if you do that over a five-year period of time, they're not $262.19, they're more like $1,310.95 per year. So it's, that's not understanding what we had written on here, that we're going by.
Yeah, so it is a, uh, five-year buy option, I mean, I don't know how, and just the math didn't make sense, I'm sorry, I'm just not...
No, I mean, you're talking about 125 units for a five-year period of time, but as it says in the information that we got, each one of the units, uh, costs $262.19, but over five years, it cost you $163,68.
Five years times the unit cost, times the twelves, so you...
Well, if you, well, if you take $262 for a unit, and 125 units...
I think those are installment charges.
If I could add a little bit, it looks like there's also cartridges, there's other equipment along with it, there's cartridges, battery pack, uh, holsters, and some other things that go along with that, that's not just the price of the taser, the total price.
It's what?
It's the total price, there's other pieces, the cartridges, the, the units that...
Yeah, the handle, all that comes with it, but it, that's what they, I don't know.
Uh, completes your report, uh, Owens?
Hold on.
Checking numbers, okay.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, you know, I hadn't read this differently or something on there, but it's...
Mr. Trey's, uh...
Explain that to me.
Yeah.
I'll try, I'll try. Can I give you some history on it real quick?
Yeah, you can.
So, the, the taser program that we've participated in, uh, we have a bunch of units that are expired, pretty much, and, uh, according to the math we have, we have about 89 units that are no longer gonna be serviceable in December of this year, so, uh, taser's kind of a proprietary, uh, one-source provider, and so they knew it was gonna be a detriment on all the agencies out there that they provide this equipment to, so they came up with a buy-in program called Tasers 60, and I didn't know anything about it until it was presented to me also, so, what they proposed is a five-year purchase, and I think it's roughly $32,000 a year, uh, and we, I think before, we were spending roughly $35,000, $34,000 a year just to maintain our, our inventory. our inventory, which is aging.
Yeah.
Just not the 89 units that we have. We also have some newer units, of which these are the newest, same model, but just, you know, it's a Chevrolet, except it's got the latest and greatest radio. So the cost does include, it includes a holster, includes two cartridges, a special battery pack that we like, so we can put another cartridge in it, so we have a reload. And it also includes a discount. So the 89 units that we have basically on our shelf that we're never going to be able to use again, they're going to credit a total of $100 a unit. So our question was, do we have to box them up and send them back to you? And they said, no, you can, you can keep them. But they're not going to be valid anymore after December, because firmware is going to be gone for them and so forth. So that also included a guess of a substantial discount above the $8,900. And so I just have, I just have the proposal and the quote, and I could read it off to you, but that's where that comes from.
That's what I was looking at, because it just didn't, you know, from what I read, it, you know, it come in, it's over 125 units, over a five year period of time, but the cost is right, it's $32,773.75 per year. And I didn't know if that included, if that cost, when you break it down, it's more than what the $260 something dollar, $262 unit cost. I didn't know if every year you had to pay for five years, not only for it again, but also warranty on it every year.
I'm glad you mentioned warranty. There is a warranty included that we always have purchased in additional four years. The basic units, they only come with a one year warranty. And you know how things are.
Yeah.
You know, year number two and a half, they start to break. And so they, we've always purchased an additional four year warranty, so we could get five years hopefully out of our units. And so this proposal here and the quote does include that. I think one of the problems is, is the $262.19 per unit, and they give you a total out there. I think that it's the way they came up with it, and it includes the discount they gave us. So I would have to really break down, and they did give us an outright quote if we didn't participate in the Taser 60 program, and we just outright bought them. And that quote came to $199,250. And it included what we asked for, but it just wasn't the Taser 60 program where we buy it for five years. And so if we do the five year program, the discount was going to be roughly $18,006, and the total cost was only going to be $163,868.
Do they have a, I didn't read it in there, do they have a buyback after five years that they'll buy them back?
I don't know if, if at the end of this particular program, that they're going to offer the same discount or the buyback for $100 a unit. The good news is, is this unit should be serviceable after that. We might not have a warranty on it.
Yeah.
But we do have some of this, some of these models in play now, and that we've purchased over several years ago, and our oldest are 2015. So those units are reaching their service life as well. As far, but what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is, even though they're going to reach their service life, as long as they offer firmware for a few of the units we still have in stock.
Yeah.
That are still serviceable, we can maybe update the firmware on those and keep those in play. But I can't, I can't tell you with certainty that they're going to offer a buyback after this program's over. I just hope that, it's just one way of knowing that within the next five years, they're going to have the Taser program up and running, and it'll be the latest. And the service life on the tasers technically is only about five years.
Oh, and the warranty of those, I know this company's out of Phoenix, I think it is. Do you have to ship them back? They work on them, or they ship you another one, you ship?
I think if it's under warranty, it's under them. I think we just box them up and send it to them, and then we get it back. To be honest, I haven't, I've only been in the position long enough to understand this portion of it. I haven't had to send any back yet, so.
We didn't have anybody in Texas that was doing the same thing, right?
I don't think we can get a better deal from a distributor out of Texas. This is straight from Taser themselves.
Okay.
And we buy enough, we bought enough units in the past that we can do directly with the manufacturer.
Okay, I appreciate it. It was just a thing, I just wanted some clarification. I couldn't figure out the math when I was sitting there doing it today.
Well, I understand. I don't, I don't know if I could get it right down to the cent for you myself, because they put such a good discount in there.
There's a breakdown on page eight. It's each unit is actually 15.65, but it's broken down over the five year installments.
Yeah, but, yeah, if you go back at the top, though, it shows it's 261.
Right, that's the installment price. So if you take the total from page eight and break that down over five years, that's the installment price of each unit.
Yeah, the math all works out. I mean, I pulled it up, I mean, it's the unit price times that times a five, and then Member Hernandez says page eight shows you the alternative, but so, but the math works for the five years. Per unit.
If you'd like to demonstrate how one works, Councilman Owens is volunteering.
I might recommend pepper spray. It's a little different.
No, 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 no.
Okay, thank you.
More concerned about money than I have anything else. We don't have much of that left.
Does that complete item F?
I think you just have to vote on that one.
We still have to, we still have to vote on this one, Mayor. We still have to vote on this item.
Okay.
Councilmember Orlando?
Second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Orlando, on the H?
Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2019-257, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So Central Square is the vendor that provides us our police OSSI software, track it, and community development, and then the old HTE, which we're still tied to for work order system, until we get a replacement for that in Public Works. We need to have that software all serviced and maintained, get the upgrades, keep it secure, et cetera. And so this is the annual fee that we've anticipated and is in the budget. Nothing to add, sir.
Counselor, any question or comment on the staff report? Hearing none. Madam Secretary?
Wanted to ask that to bring off, and I only had the one question on it. Again, this is out of Florida, and they have the maintenance on it. Do they fly up here to work on it, or how do they do that?
This wonderful thing called the internet, they do most of their stuff from Florida, so.
On the internet?
Yep.
Yeah, and my only concern is that, you know, us flying people up here from Florida to work on it, if they need, if they can do it without, that's, that's good.
Does that complete your comments? Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor sitting there.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item seven on our, which is matters removed from the consent agenda, and we just had those four, which we just completed. Item eight is new business. Moving through our new business, item one, as someone have the city manager to present this for our consideration.
This was a council request, and just for a little bit of background, we have a number of financial policies and guidelines which direct how we build not only the budget, but implement that over time. Certificates of obligation are one of our means of financing for our large capital projects. The memo outlines the practice and the policy which has been followed to this point. We have revisited this, I think, a couple of years ago. We use these certificates of obligation for financing things like Orange Street, when we got the needs there for roads and drainage improvements. We also use this for grants, when we have a local match and for large capital projects. We've used them also for public safety facilities, everything from the public safety, the public safety building on Cullen itself, to fire stations more recently. And certificates of obligation were used for the TERS interim financing, because in order to get reimbursed by the TERS, you have to build the projects first. And so it's incumbent upon us to be able to finance that. So the only way we could get that TERS money was to issue the COs in that case. So, you know, they're used judiciously in a certain number of cases, and if there is any direction or request for future building of budgets and all that, this would be a good time to talk about that for down the road. That's all I have, sir.
Counselor, any question or comment on the staff report?
Clay, thank you for presenting this. This was an item that Member Owens and I asked to be on the agenda, you know, for each time we end up having discussion about the use of certificate of obligation, or we, we're going through the budget, this item comes up, or some consternations from some of the other council members about the use of this item. I thought it was appropriate for us maybe review the policy, take a look maybe as a council, whether we want to amend the policy, or make modifications of the policy, or just kind of leave the policy as is. So if you could just kind of review exactly what are the guidelines that we use to when a CO is, when we elect to use a CO, and what type of projects we use a CO on, and generally, what are the conditions for which we try and go use that financing tool?
Sure. So it'd be unique circumstances outside of the normal, like the general obligation bonds, which we saw most recently in the 19 May 19 issue. In fact, there is a project there that really has been intended for, or planned or assumed to be COs, but council requested, and we put that on the regular ballot for the burn building, fire burn structure. But other times, you know, it's, we have the five year capital improvement program that lays out the long-term financing needs, and it shows the general obligation bonds, the TWDB bonds in the water sewer side, whatever the financing case may be. And then, like, as I was trying to explain, there are limited circumstances where certificates of obligation are the appropriate choice. It is an important option to have. And again, the best one I can think of are some of these projects that come up that, you know, we all see the need and we need to act quickly, you know, like on Orange Street, or with the TERS projects. So that's kind of the, it's a flexibility tool for us, and those are all treated as regular debt. They're, they're built into our long-range financial plans, and you see that as part of the budget and the debt service obligations, so we understand the implications of that. It counts on our debt load, just like any other kind of, you know, like the general obligation debt. So, you know, it's a means of financing that's typical around the states, and, you know, used some places more than others, and we're quite invested in the middle of that continuum.
Do we have any standing policies or guidelines that specifically state the value of a CO? Do we cap the value for non-emergency, non-TERS use, or non-situational use, where we need, we need the money temporarily to get, or we're going to get refunded within short order?
Sure. Cynthia, correct me, but I don't think there's a dollar amount that currently exists in any of your council adopted policies, so.
No, sir, there is not.
Okay. You, and if I could add, sorry, you know, you typically do not want to do that kind of debt financing for, I'll say, small projects. Needs to be of scale, that makes it worthwhile to go back through and use it as those. So it looks like we've got those instances in your current policies up there on the screen now.
Yeah, and I think for the, I think as beneficial as that, these instances are listed in item three of the agenda as opposed to item one. I would, I would generally say, you know, could we use them more judiciously? Could we do some, projects like the public safety building with non-COs? That, that project was done with a certificate of obligation as opposed to a general obligation bond. I think that was a discussion at the time of a necessity. We didn't have the bond, we didn't feel like we had the bond capacity. We were too close to the '07 bonds. Those projects hadn't really moved forward. We didn't, I think at the time, we just didn't feel like it was an appropriate time to go back to the voters for another, another general obligation bond, but we still needed the project. And they still come to us for approval if we don't, if we don't wish to use the CO for that particular project, or if we want to push it to the voters, we can, we can choose to do so. So I did want to honor Member Owens's wish by seconding and getting this to the agenda, so he has an opportunity to voice his opinion. But I think, in my, at least in my opinion, I feel like we've used it judiciously enough. But I think if council wants to try and find, find some restrictions, or at least have staff maybe explore some policies with some of the other cities to see if there's other appropriate restrictions for us to look at and investigate, to see if there's an opportunity for us to be a little bit more frugal with the use of these, I think I'm, I certainly be in favor of the discussion.
Yeah, I think you hit on most of the things that I had. It's getting to be the COs, you know, of course, with the certificates of obligation, we don't have to go back out to the people to vote on. We can, but we don't. That is approved by the members sitting up here on council to do that. It seems like, you know, we're doing more on COs as we go along through here. And not to say that what we're using them on is, is something that we shouldn't do it, but, but I think some of the things that you look at on certificates of obligation, I think they, especially since we're having a general bond in election on this past year, that we could have actually come in and added those to it, or some of them to it, because some of them are more of a long range of over a year, whatever, on there. And it just seems like to me that we should be looking at it from the time period of when you, more of an emergency type thing, within the year something happens where it's either on water, wastewater, or something that happens here in one of the facilities or what have you, that we have to go to do it. We can't go out to the outside. You know, it makes no sense to do that and to come in and do that. But I think, you know, like on this time, we're looking at paying back 11 million on with certificates of obligation, which come up on item three. And some of those things look like if they actually could have been put on the bond issue that we, we had there previously, and a couple of them I've got concerns with anyway. But that's, that's basically what I, you know, I don't want to get in a situation where we're, we're using this as a council of doing it, you know, all the time, and trying to do that in the dollar bay, getting so high when we're doing it there. I mean, you know, 11 million here and 11 million there, the 11 million that we're doing this time is, is over 10% of what the bond was that people voted on last, last time on the bond program. So that, that's, that's my concern, and, you know, you gave us the information here of when you're required to use them, or not required, but being able to use them. But I just want us to be very cautious on how many that, that we do on a, on a CO. And I don't remember us ever doing one where a developer and we were reimbursed for interest on that. But I mean, I'm sure it probably has been done, I just didn't know. But anyway, I think that, you know, we need to be very cautious on certificates of obligation. I think they can get out of hand a little bit, rather than using revenue bonds of what we're doing. And I think those things that are pushed out that we know in the beginning of a, of a year, that within the next year, year and a half, that we're going to have to do a specialist high dollar item, I don't see why we don't put out, put it out there to let citizens vote on some of the stuff.
Clay, I think we do need capital improvements, general obligation laws, because when our budget sets out what we're going to expend for the coming year, but there are times when, excuse me, like Harvey, there may be something that pops up that we, that really cannot be covered by what was, bond issue would be for the city, for the city to issue of what is in our, our bond, our capital improvements program. And so you have to have that mechanism there to be able to get, I know there were a couple cases where we had to get a little extra money to take care of some problems that Harvey called us, for instance, with the drainage problems, too much rain. So I think it's used judiciously. I think it's something that is a good, a good tool, where we may have something that's not even in the budget, and something requires us to step out and accommodate it, take care of it. We do it for our city and for our citizens. I think, I think something of that type, certificate, certificate of obligation is a useful tool, and I think it should be utilized judiciously, which we do. and I think it should be utilized judiciously, which we do.
Any further comment from council on this item?
Maybe some, a couple of questions, if you just know some ballparks. But I was reading a little bit on some of the pros and cons, and some of the pros included things like the fact that a CO can be issued to support more than one purpose or project, using the cost of issuance. So what is potential cost saving? Also, I read that COs have a potential lower cost with requirement of municipal bond insurance for revenue bonds, whereas I was reading a case study about City of Denton where they saved 2.3 million in interest by using a CO over a GO. Is that a typical scenario where we'd see that type of cost saving?
I don't know if Cynthia was ready to say something too, so John.
I was only going to say that Mr. Robuck is here, and he can address those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Give us your name and address, even though we already know it.
What's the address here? No. COs are advantageous to issue the low-interest cost. I would say a voted GO debt is probably going to be cheaper than a CO debt. Voted debt, GO debt is actually unlimited tax, while COs are actually limited tax in nature. So it's safer, GO debt is actually safer for an investor than COs. But from a revenue standpoint, without a doubt, it's a cheaper alternative. You don't have reserve fund requirements, you don't have a lot of the restrictions or covenants associated with the water and sewer debt. You do, you have the, excuse me, you have the covenants with the water and sewer debt. You don't have those with the COs. So they're cheaper than water and sewer, but I would not say they're cheaper than GO debt.
Okay. Let's see. And then one of the other things that I was reading was, oh yeah, so I guess we're trying to come up with maybe some reasons why we would use COs. Said also, they're often used to refinance or reduce interest on existing debt. Would you see that as a, this is from the State Controller's website.
Says refund debt?
No. It says to refinance or reduce interest rates on existing debt.
I've never issued a CO to refinance existing debt. It's, you have to do that with basically your obligation bonds, not COs. COs is only for new money.
Okay.
Because, and I'll point out also, the GO debt, obviously we have a bond election for, but we take the voters, voters approve it, and we have the authorization to sell those bonds when we need to sell those bonds. CO debt, you actually have to do a notice of intent. So we usually come to you guys and ask you to approve the notice of intent to issue those, and that notice is put in the paper for two consecutive weeks, it'll list the project, list the cost, and after this last legislative session, and Rick, with your bond council is here, he may, correct me here, but the new rules now require that you have that notice posted for 45 days prior to sell the bonds. Also has to be posted on your website to allow your citizens to ask questions and potentially petition the bond issue, or instead of voting yes, they can basically turn it down. There's also within this new notices, a lot more information regarding the debt you're issuing and the debt the city has outstanding. It's a lot more transparent than it's been in the past. So those rules have changed this last session.
Okay. And then I guess the final thing was, that I've seen, that there's some, I guess, movement towards setting a cap as being a percentage of total debt versus an amount, like a dollar amount? Is that?
I, within each entities, and the city probably has this too, a cap for how much debt they can issue, whether it be a percentage of your taxable assessed valuation. I have not seen a cap of COs based on your existing debt, or a percentage. I've not seen that before.
Okay.
In fact, you know, I've got three or four clients that do not issue anything but COs. They don't have voted debt at all, they don't issue water and sewer, they do purely COs for all their projects.
Oh, that's scary.
Because it's a cheaper alternative.
Cheaper for revenue?
Revenue, instead of going to bond election.
Right, okay. Okay, well, those are the main questions I have, I guess, you know, again, to reiterate, this is a discussion on kind of just general direction for the staff, so just, you know, I appreciate your feedback on those items. Thank you.
Council members have any question or comment at this point?
Mayor, the only concern, did somebody? I should have let you go ahead and do it. Yeah, the only concern I had was, you know, on there, well, a couple of things, but the main concern was that we continue to use the COs on there in over a period of time. It's, it's quite heavy. I mean, you know, this time we're going to pay off some as a, you know, a little over, show up on the next item, a little over 11 million dollars on that. And so, you know, I was going to, but I didn't have time to go back and look at my stuff from last year, see how much we sold last year in COs and the previous year. But it gets to be an insurmountable amount of money. And I think, you know, if it comes to something like that, then, you know, I think that need be that the residents see it, because sometimes, you know, somebody's going to have to pay for it. I mean, a tax increase or whatever, somebody's going to have to pay for it. So I just don't want to see it get out of hand.
Cynthia, generally, there is a, the state law kind of governs exactly how much debt we can, we can take regardless of the funding mechanism, correct?
Yes, sir.
So there is a cap?
Yes, sir, there is.
It's just not a cap that we've elected, and based on all the reporting that I've seen from staff, we're not close to our cap.
Correct, we're not close to that cap at this time.
I, it sounds to me that we were kind of comfortable that we're using it judiciously. The policy in place is working. You know, I generally trust my fellow council members. We've had some involved discussions about the use of the CO on particular projects, but I think the policy as is, is still working fine. So I mean, I guess we're going to end the discussion without recommending any changes, Member Owens?
Like I said, you know, we had the information in here, and we understand why they were doing it, but I think, you know, on long-term, I think if we see anything that's going to be, you know, should be done, say, two years from now, I don't see why we don't go out and put that out to a popular vote on there and use the GOs to do that, rather than waiting to short-term to do it. I mean, once you sell them, you sell them, the tax, you know, the rate's going to go up, and then, and this year, I guess, the taxable that we had was 8.1 billion, and it went up to 8.5 billion for the taxable rate. So I just don't want to see it get out of hand of where it keeps building up, and some of the things that we've got coming out in the future, and I say the near-term future, is going to be very significant on the amount of bonds that we're going to actually be selling. That's all I have.
Council having any other questions or comments?
I'll just say this, Mayor, council does have the ultimate decision to deny issuance of a CO for anything, so at the end of the day, council controls that.
Are you getting any information to help on this?
I appreciate it. I mean, we do our work following these policies and plans that the council adopts, so there's no surprises. And, you know, as was on the screen, there's guidelines, and as you heard from Mr. Robuck, it's a financing tool that's used around the state. Just, and so it's important to revisit again the policy, make sure we're, understand that first and foremost, and we go from there. I mean, as was stated several times, you see the capital improvement program that flows from the thoroughfare program, and the drainage program, and all these other works that we say we want. And just put brass tacks on the certificate of obligation that's coming up, of that 11 million, half of it is for the, something like the 288 northbound Frontage Road, which wouldn't happen. And, you know, as council knows, that project was on again, off again, city leading it, county leading it. So we need certainty in that. That's one of the prime examples of, you know, using that flexible finance and to get something done, and leveraging outside dollars, that is a huge improvement that, you know, I think the council wisdom elected, you know, the timing wouldn't have been right to wait for a GO, and, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't have happened but for making sure, putting in our plans and being able to commit for that project.
I really believe we've used the capital certificates of obligation with good judgment, and I think we implied them in an appropriate place. And I think it's, it's a tool, like everything else in the city, for maybe shifting manpower around, or shifting a piece of equipment, or moving money in the right position, like you just described as wanted. So I think it's, I think it's something we need to keep and use with good judgment, which we have always done.
Any further comment from council? I don't think we need more than...
There's no action on, for tonight, unless there's some...
You don't need any action on this item. Move to item number two. Councilman Reed, would you present this for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2019-260, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor with staff, staff report?
So I'll turn it over to Mr. Robuck in a second, but this is for our TERS number two project. The city has a formula that's worked well over the last, you know, 15 years to, as part of TERS number two, there's a separate development authority, and then there's a TERS board, and, you know, it's very complex, but, you know, basically this TERS has been very successful in adding value and diversity to the tax base. This is the funding to pay back projects that have gotten in line through the appropriate measures. What's significant, and I'm sure will be mentioned, is this, I believe, completes the payments to the master developer, and so that's a huge milestone, which there were no guarantees that that would happen for the developer or for the, any others. And after this, the TERS can move for paying other entities that have completed projects and are in line. So, but Mr. Robuck will talk about the financing, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mayor, council members, John Robuck with BOK Financial Securities. Before I get going on the presentation, I will like to point out, this debt does not affect the city, this is not the city's debt. The DAP was established back in 2004 as a mechanism for the TERS to issue debt to reimburse the developers, the Shadow Creek Ranch improvements. So this is purely an administrative approval. The DAP previously approved this this afternoon at 4:30. So all we're doing is presenting this to you guys and asking you for your approval also. This does not affect the city. If things go bad, the development authority paralelism in the hook, not the city. So I'll put that out before I get started. We did sell bonds, there we go. And before I get to those results, again, I want to show you the current bond market review. This is, again, the weekly index of municipal bonds across the country. I do want to point out, the blue line is the general obligation index. We are at all-time lows at 2.59%. So we've seen rates just continue to drop over the last couple of months, and so it was a great environment to sell bonds within. And as a result, we sent out a term sheet and a bid sheet to 28 separate banks on September 30th. And Friday, last Friday, at 10 o'clock, we received five bids. The winning bid came in from Regions Bank with a rate of a 1.91%. Regions Bank actually owns several of the DAP's bond issues. In fact, they own about 58% of the outstanding debt of the development authority. So they're very comfortable with the credit, and they very, they very much like it, and that's why the rate was so, so low. Because of that rate, we were able to issue about 4,255,000 in bonds, which generated total proceeds for developer reimbursement of 4,91,000. The all-cost interest rate was at 2.668%. And because of that, this is the final debt service requirements. On the far left is the current debt service requirements of the development authority, plus the new principal and interest and total debt service, the 2019 bonds. There on the far right is the total debt service requirements going forth of bonds. Now, this debt was structured around the tax increments, or the incremental value increase from the 1998 base year, the city of Paralel and Brazoria County and Fort Bend County. And so each year, we get a certified value and also a estimated value. As of July 1, we use those numbers to find out what our estimated capture value is for each of those entities. We apply those to the model based on the tax rate and participation. We come up with the total collections. You look on the chart here in 2020, the total collections, we have 12.4 million, 12.5 million dollars of funds we can bond against, and we take about 125% off for coverage requirement, hold that back for safety purposes, investor safety. We entered the current debt of the DAP, and then new bond issue to come up with the bond issue, structural bond issue that way. So we have a capacity analysis run every year based on those captured values, and that's what generated the 4,255,000 in bonds. And on the scheduled events, we're near the bottom. We sold the bonds again this morning, or Friday morning, and then the development authority approved it at 4:30 this afternoon, and we're asking you to approve it tonight. And if you all approve it, on the 12th of November, we'll have the funds available to provide for the developer reimbursements. That'll be happy to answer your questions.
Any other questions or comment from council?
This particular item was discussed this afternoon on the development authority meeting, which supports the financing portion of the TERS, and we looked upon this with favor and let it prove it. And we were very impressed with the percentage of loans that you're able to come up with. I don't know where you dig those things up, but it's quite impressive with, I wonder, was it 1.5, what was it?
1.91%.
1.5. Where do you get that kind of a money? Well, they do it because it's such a quality development, and we've done such a great job over the years, and from the financing and support portion, and Overwatch, the financial aspect of it, the development authority of Paralel has, has worked on that issue, and it requires council approval to proceed. And because we're near, we're approaching really the end of the Shadow Creek Ranch TERS, and we'll be ending in a very short period of time. So we want to make sure we're doing this right, and it has been done with almost 29 years.
Right, sir. Yes, sir.
Council have any question or comment on this item? Here you go. I believe we have motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Good. Thank you, it was a good presentation. Just keep those good numbers low when you come in like that. That's, we appreciate that. Moving into our agenda, item number three. Councilman Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2019-261, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. This is a procedural item that's important after we adopt each budget. We adopt these intents reimbursed that follows the projects, and puts it on the record and allows for us, we don't issue the debt ahead of time with the projects, we wait until we're farther along and have a better idea about, and can limit the amounts of the debt to what we actually need. But this puts it in the record, and it's required in order to reimburse ourselves for the money we front for these projects between now and the actual issuance. So there's a variety of water sewer projects, interim funding for the TERS, which you touched on earlier, general obligation and CO projects that would all be eligible and are included and specified in this resolution. That's all I have, sir.
I complete your report?
Yes.
Council having a question or comment on the staff report? That's what Owens?
The only thing I have, looking at the COs, and I talked to District City Manager over there, about the one on 288 northbound Frontage Road, 5.6 million. I guess the only thing, and I don't know, Trent, you might have told me, but on the, what we've done to date is just something on the design that we've done on there, but it's not, that's not the number, but...
Yes, sir. So so far, we've just done the design contract. I believe it's about a $560,000 design contract.
What's the 5.6 million?
So this would be the construction dollars that the city would be responsible for. In addition to that, the county has committed 1.5 million dollars towards construction, and the EDC contributed, I believe, it's $750,000 towards the project, some of that which has been used on the design portion.
All right. And since we started this, and you've turned the project back over to state again, didn't you?
So we've, since we don't believe it's going to be able to, or it's not going to be able to be change-ordered into the toll lane projects, based on the pricing and the cost given to us by that contractor, it was so much higher than the unit prices that were part of the toll lane bids. That was such a large delta.
were part of the toll lane bids, that was such a large delta, we felt it made sense that we really need to put this out on the streets and competitively bid the project. So at that point, we asked, since it would not be change ordered into the toll lanes project, we asked Tech Dot if they would take over managing this project and bidding the project out, and they agreed, they've agreed to do that, not only agreed to take it over, but also take on the cost of construction management, inspection, and material testing, which is estimated at about 11% of the project, so whereas beforehand, Tech Dot was not going to pick those costs up, now that Tech Dot's going to manage the project, they'll pick that about eight, you know, 7, 800,000 dollars worth of cost up during construction. So we've reviewed the advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot, sent back very minor comments, and we're waiting for Tech Dot to get that back in front of us so we can present it to the council for approval.
And the only reason we got into this was, we thought we could get it done at a cheaper price now than originally waiting on Tech Dot to do it five years from now.
I think it was twofold, yes, it was, it was the time as well as the cost of what we expected it to cost five years from now, we could also, you know, accelerate the project by about five years.
Okay, Trent, out of the 5.6 million, what have we spent to date so far? The only thing, what?
We, we've spent none of that, we've spent none of the 5.6 million.
What's that for?
That's for construction.
Whenever Tech Dot gets around to it.
Well, in our last meeting with Tech, yes, but when our last meeting with Tech Dot, they indicated that possibly as early as next May, but I would expect it in 2020.
How far along are we on the design, or has that been given up at the same time?
95%, and we've basically got the 95%, well, Tech Dot's had the 95% plans, they've asked us, there's some drainage changes that we've done with that, so we're compiling those sets of plans together at the 95% level, which allows it to go into Tech Dot for their five-month review period. But we've got to get the advanced funding agreement in place before they'll accept those and put them through their.
Yeah, that's, that's key on it, but I was just really concerned about the 5.6 million, what, what do we have out there that we, and so we haven't paid anything yet?
All we have is the design contract, the 566,000 dollars on the contract. Again, that's why we have this intent to reimburse, we don't spend the money until, that's why we do this first, and then we'll obligate ourselves with construction. And when we get to the point where we move forward and actually sell these COs, if something because of Tech Dot or anything else means this project's dragging out and it's not going to occur in 2020, we won't sell these COs this year. However, if it moves forward and we're ready to go to construction and Tech Dot's bidding it out and going to construction, then this allows us to move forward with that and then reimburse ourselves when we sell the COs.
Okay, so, were we the ones that paid for the design?
Yes.
Okay.
Us and, us.
County had 1.3 million or something like that into this project?
1.5 million is what Brazoria County's, is obligated to the project.
Okay, so they haven't put any?
No, the city and the EDC shared in the cost of the design.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it's no secret, I wasn't for the project when we were first done it, but for being able to get it.
Do you have the comments from council?
Yeah, Mayor, just briefly, I think, you know, the 288 project is a great, a great project, is an example of why we need the COs, you know, we, this project is needed, the tip funding's not going to come for at least five years, and I don't think there's a more important, a roadway project in Pearland that needs to be done, again, getting northbound traffic to be facing northbound at that intersection. So if we, as we have been doing, approve this, continue to put pressure on Tech Dot to allow this project to move forward, I think that's a minimum what we need to be doing in order to serve the citizens that are affected by that clogged intersection. Everything else on here, I think we've already, we've already discussed it nauseam and certainly we want to move forward with, so thanks, staff.
Do you have the comments from council to this one? Secretary, we've got a motion and a second sitting on the table.
Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to new business, item number four, Councilmember Hernandez, would you do the honor?
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, second and final reading of Ordinance 2000M-190, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on forward, staff report.
Thanks, sir, this is the second reading on a rezon request to General Commercial from the current PD, and allowing for this outside storage has been described, and council's seen this before, so just ask, this would complete that, that request by the applicant. Nothing to add, sir.
Council having a question or comment on staff report? Secretary, we've got a motion second, waiting there for you.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving to new business, before we proceed, Councilmember Perez has indicated a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mayor, there are two items on the agenda, this being the first, where I have a business relationship with the applicant, though it doesn't meet the ethical standard or the standards of the ethical ordinance, I think it's of essence to the city that I recuse myself and step out of the room for the discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
That information on the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, second and final reading of Ordinance 2000M-191, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Is this staff report?
Just real briefly, and again, this is the second reading on this, it's for a zone change from the R3 to the GB, and over here on Broadway Street, so nothing further to add, sir.
Staff report?
Yes, it does.
Council having a question or comment on staff report?
I've just got one quick one, Mayor, and I see the client out there now, have you decided what you're going to do on that property right now or not?
If you could come to the microphone, you got it, for the record.
No, Alan's not here, so I'll put.
Come up to the podium, give your name and address, please.
My name's Andy Greve, and I live at 6603 White Hill Lane in Richmond.
Now, what I was asking, I mean, before we complete on, on the zoning of this, have you made any decision what you're?
Well, I established the G-Tech Innovation Center in, in Katy a few years ago, and we've just done the same in Brookshire, we're an organization to try and, and assist in, in business startup, and we're supporting of innovation, the facility in Katy was focused on providing co-working industrial space, and we landed up with this opportunity in Pearland, I didn't really know Pearland very well before, and as you know, I'm not from these parts, but we got this opportunity, and I've really enjoyed getting to know the place, so our plans would be to develop the site, it's a, it's a difficult site to develop because it's in the flood zone, but I'm an engineer and would just like to challenge, but eventually I foresee it as being supporting in maybe professional use, maybe, maybe just light general business, but more focused on working with organizations like Houston Exponential, Station Houston, and try and support business moving into the area, and really what we're, I envisage it being professional space for that type of incubator type application, but obviously there might be some light commercial, I'm really just taking this first step to try and get the rezoning, and then hopefully talk to as many people in the area and, and see what the best use of the, of the site would be, but in support of my general concept of innovation.
Yeah, the only concern I had was actually, the way it is, it's a flag type, which carries you, you know, back from Broadway there, 518, to get into the property there, but I think, you know, from what I understand, it is, you have an in and out on the property on, on Country Club, or this is that, does not get you past the monument and divide in the road, so, and we've already got one coming out there on, during that area, and people that come out from that Valera there, and they use that to get in the left lane in order to turn left on 518, they have to block the traffic, which goes straight or turn to the right, they have to block that because it's only three car lengths, is all you have for stacking room there in that area, so that's the only concern I have, and if you don't know that now, you know, on there, because you don't have your plan, I guess that could be looked at later on.
Well, I mean, the, that's why we're trying to employ the, the best engineers and advisors to help us here, and so we are going to go into some detailed feasibility work now, but we just didn't want to really start that until we knew if we could, if we, it's a bit of a chicken egg situation, I'm afraid. Well, I, I would, I would love the opportunity to come back and present ideas and plans and thoughts and, on, on what might value the area.
Yeah.
To support general business and support the innovation, I found it tough coming over here and relocating and raising finance to do it and, and take the project on in Katy, but we built a 48,000 square foot facility in Katy, and it was, it was, it was very high risk, but it worked out, and, and we're trying to do the same in Brookshire right now, and I hope we can do the same in Pearland.
Yeah, that's the only thing, since it's a, you know, flag lot there on, on that, I mean, you could do a right in and right out coming out from Broadway, but we'll see as it, as it goes on, what you want.
Well, I'm a very open book, so I can assure you, I would love to come back and present, and if there's any concerns, it would be modified.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment from council? There you go, we have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Aye.
Moving to new business, item six, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor, Consideration of Possible Action, second final reading, Ordinance Number 1107-1, so moved.
Second.
Sure. We have a second on it, we have motion second, we're in discussion, staff report.
So council may have a memory of a rather long, convoluted discussion we had months ago on cross connections, that I did adopt on our first reading, but frankly, we went back and did some better research and deeper, also, there's been since an amendment to the plumbing code, and bottom line, what had been feared to be a pretty broad, new requirement for these cross connections, where it's now going to be limited to only, quote unquote, these sort of high risks or situations in other areas, it's not going to be a general provision for inspections and all this paperwork, et cetera, for, you know, regular customers, and so this would complete the requirement to get us in line, but it's a much more straightforward and less invasive kind of application now because, again, of, of reading of the state requirements and then the plumbing code change that did occur. So that's all I have, sir.
Councilor Levick, response to the staff report?
So, I guess, reading through here, it's my understanding that, for residents, it's really only going to affect the systems that have like built-in chemical type systems, things like that, is that correct?
That's correct, what's considered health hazards are going to be residents that have either an irrigation system with a chemical, chemical additives, a pool with an automatic chemical feed, or properties with a septic system, all other residential properties will not be in the annual testing requirements.
Okay, so I think that was one of the biggest concerns, I appreciate y'all going back and getting that additional information, I think that's going to help a lot of fear that's out there right now about this.
I should have added, I mean, this is an important program, and it needs, but now we can focus on these other hazards, I mean, it's, it is a risk to the system if you don't have a, a program where you're evaluating these and where it's appropriate to have these blocks, so there's not contaminated water or other kinds of things going back into the system, so, but this will allow us to focus a lot better.
So I'm, I'm glad that we got the clarification, because I think the, again, dovetailing with what I remember Hernandez said, it did, it did make it sound like if you have a sprinkler system and/or a pool, we're going to require a backflow preventer, require annual fee, require annual inspection, so the clarity, I think, makes sense, I appreciate why there was, why there was confusion, so I appreciate us coming back to it. On the commercial end, again, refresh my memory, are we, are we going to a standard where all commercial businesses on the domestic line are going to require a backflow preventer at the meeting?
I'm going to have to defer to our experts on that to find out if it's all of them. Soon as we figure out who those experts are, I think I see one coming to this.
Okay, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not all commercial businesses, only commercial businesses that are identified through our inspections, the majority of businesses, like all restaurants, hospitals, nail salons, veterinaries, so there are some specific commercial industries that are pinpointed in the regulation that we should be monitoring for that potential hazard, but a shoe store, you know, they wouldn't need that type of a backflow prevention, so it's not every single commercial, it's, it is a lot, but it's not everyone.
So, in general, are we going to be following strictly off of TCQ's guidelines?
That is correct.
And those will be, those will trigger an RPZ, and we'll make them put the RPZ per TCQ?
That is correct.
So the incidents of where we have like a retail development that's got an RPZ in, in front of it, we, we'd kind of push and require that on occasion, we're, we're no longer going to be doing that.
And I believe there are some requirements for fire as well, so, fire sprinklers, and so that may cause for that, or type of prevention as well.
Yeah, that would, I guess that would dovetail on my next question, which would be on the, on the fire side, would we allow for a double check as opposed to an RPZ, a vaulted double check, or would, would we allow the double check to be in the riser room as a plumbing code allows, that way, and just pushing it outside the building has a tendency to be very costly, requiring the RPZ has a tendency to be not just costly, but also unattractive, if you drive down Pearland Parkway and see the RPZs that are sticking out in front of the, the, those retail developments, again, something that we had required of them, that's not guaranteed, that's not something that's voluntary on the developer's end, and I know about those particular instances, so, you know, we just don't want those, if it's not necessary, we don't want those, the unsightly RPZs out in front, so.
Correct, and the, the regulation has a recommendation as to the type of backflow devices that are recommended for that type of facility, so we would be following that.
So we would say, and if it's a retail development that has a sprinkler system, it would be no backflow preventer in the front of the building, we'd have a double check on the riser, in the riser room on the, on the fire line?
I believe so, so I would have to double check, but I'm more certain that's.
Uh oh, here comes, here comes Roll.
He wants to get him a ticket.
Yeah.
Councilmember, that is correct, the, the double check will be in the riser room on the residential developments, in each sprinkler system.
Okay, well, certainly they can elect to do it outside the building if they wish, but we would, we would give them the least costly option.
That's correct, the riser comes up through on the inside of the building, out of the, you know, outside of the elements, we don't want it to freeze.
Yes, sir, and like, broad strokes, the type of commercial development would be any kind of manufacturing that does make up water, middle schools, high schools, if we had a, a water bottling plant, things of that nature, hospitals, medical treatment facilities, stuff of that nature, all right, funeral homes, okay, thank you.
So on, on the sprinkler systems, most of them have the backflow on a sprinkler system, you know, for residential? Yeah, for your lawn and stuff like that.
Irrigation, so most people that have a backflow on the irrigation. So most people that have a backflow on the irrigation, it's not considered a health hazard according to TCQ's requirements. So they would not be required to have a annual testing unless there's a known health hazard, such as they may have a, a septic system on their property as well as connected to the city water supply with the backflow device.
I just wanted, and this has to be somebody that's, that does these checks or, or come in approved by the city and it's a hundred, hundred dollar fee for them to get approved? And then for every report that they fill out, it's a forty dollar fee for every report? Yeah, because I was just wondering, some people had mentioned something about that, and it seemed like that if it was for sprinkler systems, you know, or irrigation on, so that, you know, that's just gets you through the door for somebody to pass on a price, that would be probably roughly a two hundred dollar deal to have them come out. The one thing that I did have though on there is that in order to do that, are we going to inspect each one of these places to find out if, if, if that's, we're going to have to go out and inspect it to do that?
Correct. Through our cross connection program, we do plan on doing an evaluation of all the residents and seeing those that have, that we know that have irrigation systems or pools, pools, we're going to just do a customer service inspection that will determine if they have a backflow device that needs an annual inspection, if they meet that threshold of a, a known hazard.
That's going to be pretty time consuming.
It's going to be time consuming.
37,000 homes here in Pearland right now. But the thing about it is, once that you do it and you see that they do have to inspect it, does it go in our system to where you automatically have to, you know, have to have somebody out there the following year? Because this is a yearly deal.
The inspections for residential, we're planning to do a three-year survey of the city, and with that, we can assess those that do not meet that requirement, we'll just, we'll indicate them, we'll have them in our system, but they won't be, meet that requirement, they won't need to be an annual check or anything. If they do meet that threshold, we will notify the resident, let them know that they're, they meet that health hazard, and we'll have to have an annual testing of their backflow device.
Yeah, and the people doing the inspection has to be certified by the city.
Certified by the state or a licensed plumber.
Will this include residents with swimming pools?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Will this include residents that have swimming pools?
Correct.
It will.
They, again, we'll monitor them to see, we'll check their systems. If they have a, a chemical feed attached to their backflow device or to that line, then they'll have to meet that requirement of an annual check. Otherwise, they won't.
Do we have any sense of the scale of that, what proportion would be estimated to have a chemical feed versus not?
No, we're figuring it's not, it's going to be very minor if, we're not anticipating.
Much lower than a hundred percent then?
Oh, yeah.
So I would be remiss if I didn't point out, you know, wording is my thing. So on page eight, section one, some of the changes that were made, just the word "the" was crossed out before public water system, just to keep that "the" in the language. Section 30-111, the next to last sentence. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other question or comment, Council? Hearing none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
New business.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Armando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item number seven, Councilmember Owens, would you present this for our consideration?
Huh? You want to listen? Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number 12.
Do you move closer to the microphone so we can all hear? Me and the audience too?
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll get it this time. Consideration possible action, a first reading ordinance number 1210-2019-1, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Wow, I heard everything you said. We're in motions and second on the floor, we're in discussion, staff report.
I have one like your voice, member. So this is an item for consideration, first reading, and frankly, this is something that we messed up on the prior version, so this is to correct that. There's, was a change that was requested to deal with traps and, and some of the plumbing code, and we just grabbed the wrong version of that when we presented that last time and didn't catch that, so apologies, but this is to correct that makeup for what council originally intended.
Councilor Levnik, question or comment on this half report?
I just, I'd like to thank the staff for continuing to work on making this improvement. Appreciate it.
Any other question or comment? Hearing none, I think we have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Armando?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving to item number eight, with our council, the staff has requested that item be pulled from the agenda for tonight. So moving with that in mind, moving to item nine, Councilmember Armando, it's back to you, sir.
Consideration impossible action, resolution number R 2019-245, so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
This is the first renewal of a contract we'd bid out a year ago for right away maintenance and, and not just mowing, but sprinklers and, and tree maintenance, litter removal, pest control, mulching, turf management, et cetera, et cetera. So a couple of years ago, we combined the four different contracts into this one. It's been working very well for us. I've gotten a good routine with staff, and this contractor has performed well throughout the, the term. It's a slight increase that's allowable, 1.4% of the CPI. So recommend your consideration approval. Maldonado has done well, as I said, they've actually got, opened an office here, little satellite in Pearland to base for these operations, which has further improved their performance for us.
Okay, councilor, any question or comment regarding staff report? Hearing none from the council, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Armando absent from the chambers.
Moving to new business item number 10, Councilmember Reed though.
Thank you.
Hand it over to you tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2019-252, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, and we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is, as we described in the memo in a Thursday packet prior, we've been working for many months trying to find the, an ultimate solution for some water issues in the Canterbury area. Bottom line, the cause is this newer subdivision and was built, there's a number of long dead end lines. We've tried a variety of interim measures in terms of automatic flushings and so forth, but it's just very high intensity maintenance, and this ultimately needs to be fixed with what is proposed here, and that's to loop the, the system at this location. I've been working with some of the surrounding property owners to get the easements and bring this to you, so after it's been designed and recommend your consideration to move forward with this construction amount as noted here.
Okay, good report. Councilor Levnik, response or question or comment regarding his staff report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. How old is this subdivision?
The first bits were probably, I don't know, Robert, you can tell.
Councilman Moore, you're, you're in the neighborhood about 15 to 20 years. Canterbury Park, phase one was the initial development, and then at one point in time there was planned in the future to be commercial area behind it, so they put in larger water lines, but then it just continued to stay in residential and stayed that way up against to the railroad tracks. And so we have that issue that's taken place to help resolve with this contract.
Okay, so that kind of answers my question, why they have that long dead end line is that there was proposed something else to be there. Okay, I, I don't know, I don't know if we have some kind of policy in place now, you know, moving forward, maybe we don't have them do this because I see this as, excuse me, a developer's issue that now has become our issue now that we're having to pay the bill on it when the developers should have paid the bill on that. I don't know if there's any policy in place now to maybe not allow them to put that water line in like that until it's needed, so that we don't end up getting stuck with a bill on fixing something that is really their issue.
Councilman Moore, we do have those in place now. We've updated our current water model that's, was in place back in 2007 to be more detailed now, where we are utilizing that for future development, and we're finishing off the final conformance of that so that we can then supplement and send that out to the consultants that are developing. And we can also take a look and utilize that when their developments come in to confirm that they have the appropriate size water lines to be able to move water through the system, provide the fire suppression necessary at the fire hydrants, but not oversized where we can cause issues later as we're starting to see more conservation measures take place.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of, a couple of questions. On some of these cul-de-sacs where we still have dead ends, we feel comfortable we're going to get enough circulation through those that, those, those dead ends aren't going to end up with stagnant water, and those lines aren't oversized?
Correct. We actually are taking the, the lead on quite a few of those, and we've done as many as we can do with the land that is available and left due to plating. And at this point in time, the ones that are left, we feel comfortable that they are sized correctly, and we will continue to monitor as required by TCQ.
And are we adding auto flushers onto the system as well? Is this belt and suspenders approach, or are we just trying to get the recirculation by looping?
This, the system that is in there right now already has quite a few auto flushers, and with what we're doing now, we'll remove those that were put in to try to be a mitigation, mitigation approach to see if that would work, and this is ultimately what the solution based off our water modeling will show to reduce age of water in the area.
Let me make sure I understand, are we removing the auto flushers or are we leaving them in place?
We'll be removing those that were put in as a mitigation effort at one point.
We don't see the value in leaving them in place, or we feel that there's a?
I feel comfortable with regards to what we have with the water model showing that we've reduced the age of water dramatically by being able to loop these, what we have, and, and continue to move water around.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just maintain through pigging and standard flushing procedures as we do the rest of the city?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Is that, I guess, Robert, I've been getting several calls from, or not calls, but emails from people in Delvede, off of Scarsdale, and that's not that, really that old of an area there. Is it something to do with the tight pipe that we have in there, bringing in there, or what do you think? I mean, and in Old Country Club, we've seen about every other week flushing in that, those areas there.
What we'll do, Councilman O'Neil, is that I'll take those informations and I'll get some answers back and move on with that and put it in our log as well, but I'll, I'll respond back and get you some information.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Any other council comments? Hearing none, Madam Secretary. We have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Armando?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving in our agenda before item 11, Councilmember Perez has requested this position of conflict of interest?
Thank you, Mayor, again, second item on the agenda where I have an existing business relationship with the, with the organization associated with this agenda item, so I think it's in best interest of the citizens that I recuse myself from the, from the vote.
Okay. We have a motion second on the floor, I believe, if I can get the council to pick that up, Councilman Little?
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2019-239, so move.
Second.
A motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is a professional services contract that I'm pleased we're able to present and move forward on as part of capital improvements, and this is for a replacement of fire station number four currently at Freedom Drive and Cullen. That station is going on 17 years old, but more importantly, it was built at a much different time when the Pearland Fire Department was very different from what it is today. We have much greater needs for staffing and facilities, and so this building just cannot be, you know, repurposed for that fire use. So we have reviewed proposals and have a contract with joiner architects who's worked well with us in the past to design us a new fire station four on property adjacent to, where we already have land, so that'll make things more straightforward, easier, more efficient for us. And what I'm also excited about is that included in this is also to repurpose existing fire station four, not just demolish it, and to provide something else we need, have acute need for, and that's to provide a training facility on that property, and that we foresee where we could even have our own police academy, where instead of sending recruits, cadets to Pasadena or Alvin Community College, we could provide that right here in Pearland and have our staff training our own officers and develop that pipeline. So that'd be a, a great step forward, but that's down the road, but at least this would put us in position. So on Freedom Drive, we'll have a good nucleus of city facilities centralized there, a good location, and so this contract will allow that to move forward. That's all I have, sir.
Councilor Levnik, question or comment regarding this particular item? You know, that, that has some destruction flows with the concrete slab that went in, and so partly enough, the, the facility is showing its age a little more, more rapid rate than I had expected.
I didn't think.
I thought I'd enter that as a concern disaster.
I didn't think.
Councilor Levois, my two comments?
We have some problems on the flooring in there, on the concrete. We'll put that in. On this one, we're using, what, certificates of 7.3 million on there, but I don't know what the other funding for. Station number seven is 1.435.
On station seven?
Mr. Pearson, I believe that when we first developed the, the sequence of projects for our fire stations is that we were moving forward with seven in front of four. However, with the operational implications of a new station, number seven, we ended up switching those up with this current capital improvement project, our capital improvement program, because four exists, there's no operational impact by bringing on additional firefighters. Right, so that was from the, that was from the previous budget for fire station seven, which wasn't used, and now we've moved, moved that over to four since four is the priority.
Okay.
One of the concerns we've had is that station four is built from the volunteer fire department, which has had a minimum use of equipment and manpower. And this is a good time to take a strong look at that because it does have a central, it's in the center of a service area, and you have to make sure that, that the service area is well equipped to handle all of the needs, but make sure the citizens are taken care of. Any comments from council at this point, Father?
What is included in the operation and maintenance cost starting in two thousand and twenty-two of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars annual? It was a little high for a brand new facility.
I'm going to guess that's for some loose equipment or something else that might go in there to start off or is there anything else? The technology, anything else that might be in there?
We'll have to take.
We'll have to go back.
That's an estimate that may have gotten held over from some.
Station seven.
That we need to update.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
I'll see what we got. The people's going to sign it after. Okay, I forgot to ask a question.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Perez absent from the chambers.
Okay, did you, Councilmember back in? Moving to item number twelve, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action resolution number R two zero one nine dash two five eight, so moved.
Second.
We have motion second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As again, we outlined in the AR here and the packet, this is a very big positive win for Pearland. We competed for and were awarded grants through the federal government, the Safer Grant Program. So this is going to allow us to pull forward the staffing, which we'd planned for in the next fiscal year twenty-one. Instead have people, they'll start to be available for that second apparatus, which has already been bought and which otherwise would not necessarily had been, had people for. It was bought by the Terres District and pull that forward and be able to do that in this current FY twenty. So this grant, federal grant, is going to pay for three years subsidized portion of the staffing. And it declines somewhat, but still for our match money, it's going to provide that kind of a benefit. So hats off to Mr. Hardy on the grant side and then our fire department. He was supported with on a lot of the technical work to make this, to have the eyes out and compete for this, get all the paperwork. And so there's no obligations. There used to be with the Safer Grant Program, you had to keep the people on for commitments. We obviously will be keeping them on, but I just want to make that note. And so recommend and thank everybody that's worked on this. Thank you, sir.
I think that's a great, great, great idea and good progress. Council, any question or comment at this point, staff report?
Good job, Mr. Hardy and the rest of the staff that worked on this.
Couple of questions. So this will, this will initiate once we hire the first firefighter, correct?
Correct.
When do we estimate that that first hire to be?
So it's a little fluid. I mean, we're going to negotiate, try to move it back as much as possible, but they're going to have some requirements. I think it was by March of twenty-one, we had to get going on this and have people on?
Yes, sir. So March the tenth of two thousand and twenty, we have to initiate the period of performance.
March, so with respect to our continuous onboarding, the budget implications for that, do we have kind of a plan of how this is going to offset some of the expenditures since that was a big component for our?
So we're going to continue with the twelve that we already have in our budget. We can't supplant that and we're going to have that first twelve, so this won't be replacing those. This will be adding additional bodies. But we've got to come up with a plan between now and then of how we're going to onboard and absorb these people. So I can't tell you that right now, we'll have to follow up on that.
So possibly mid-year, we may have a better plan of, you know, how this would, this would offset some of the budgetary items and then we could look at how we want to expend that offset. Or are we looking at this being basically mitigating our two thousand and twenty-one budget?
Again, mitigating the two thousand and twenty-one. We'll actually have a little bit of extra cash out of hand for twenty, but it'll be minimal and the benefit will be extreme. So, yeah, it won't help any of the two thousand and twenty expenditures. It'll actually add a little bit, but it's going to dramatically improve our force power there, be able to do things.
Okay, just for, for the benefit of the budget, when we get into the two thousand and twenty-one, if we could make sure that we have that either in the white paper or as we go into the budget, kind of have that allocation, see how we're, how we're utilizing this money as a, as a revenue source, see how it's offsetting ultimately our tax rate so we can hold that. I know we've talked about targeting the effect of how that's going to help us do that. I think that would help with the general conversation next year's budget. And great job to everyone involved. Thank you, Joel.
Council, any other question or comment at this point? Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Little. Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, if that information is in the record, let's move to item thirteen. Said manager, have we questioned it?
Oh, sorry, sir. I'm going to actually ask Mr. Branson to take care of this one for us.
So thank you, Mr. Pearson. Actually, I'm going to start off with Mr. Hardy kicking off the first part of this and then I'll follow up with the second part.
Before you do that, Mr. Hardy, I'm going to step down. I'm involved with one of the organizations that is applying for some of these funds. So my box of tissue and I are going to go in the hallway and recuse ourselves from this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mayor and council, just to briefly set the stage, this is a program that is sponsored by the Houston Galveston Area Council. On a binal basis, they issue a notice of funding announcement that involves state dollars that come through the TCEQ that the funding is sourced through tipping fees that come from landfills. And they garner about one point one million dollars for the region. And that disbursement allows for the solid waste reduction and recycling programs that we've traditionally applied for. I think over the last eight, ten years, we've been very successful getting those dollars. We have been using those funds to acquire equipment for the Stella Roberts Recycling Center, both as operated under the auspices of the city and also under contract with KPB as an operator. We've had an MOU in place that has allowed that facility to continue to benefit from these grant funds. So we've gotten a glass crusher, paper balers, all sorts of tilt hoppers, bulb crushers and things like that. And initially, we have a discussion in place right now to continue that program with KPB under the auspices of another MOU that would allow them to get grant funds for equipment that's necessary for the operation of the facility and their intentions. However, I will say that I apologize, the AR originally had a discussion about a tire shredder being the item they were interested in pursuing. Staff did attend the Texas Star Summit, which, and I say staff, the KPB staff, and that is the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling. And at that conference, they were made aware of some realities that suggest that a tire shredder might be a little bit more of an endeavor than they want to get into. So they've come up with some alternate items that they'd like to pursue involving some important needs that have been in discussion for a long time, a forklift being one of those and some kind of ancillary equipment to support the use of the glass crusher. The glass crusher's become a very popular item with citizens. They can get recycled crushed glass that they can use in their landscaping and other items. And we want to do something to allow it to be a little bit easier than to package those materials up and pass them to citizens that that's so desired. So that's pretty much it. There are several categories that this source of funding can allow us to apply for, but we want to stick to the one that we've been successful at, and that's the source reduction and recycling program. However, I'm going to pass the balance of the discussion to Mr. Branson, who's going to discuss another option that involves a community-based organization that we would also potentially submit an application on behalf of. So with that said, if there are no other questions, I'll pass that to John.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. I wanted to just remind council, this doesn't require any action of you tonight. This is really just information and discussion if you so choose. So unless we hear any objections, we'll be submitting two grant applications on behalf of the city. The first one is, is in a, an agreement. Ultimately, it'll be equipment for the Stella Roberts Recycling Center. And then the second item will actually be the purchase of equipment, air monitoring equipment, and then a weather station. And the purpose of that is to gather data and information that will help support efforts to proactively provide TCEQ with information that will help. Ultimately, the goal is to resolve the odor matter that's on the west side of Pearland. You may recall that since two thousand and fifteen, there has been over six thousand complaints that have actually come in by citizens within the community concerned about odor issues. TCEQ has gone out and they have issued over two hundred and twenty-two citations. There's been an enforcement action taken. And so what we believe will happen is with the actual purchase of a weather station and four pieces of monitoring equipment that will actually detect over two hundred different VOCs, that what we'll be able to do is take that data, present it to TCEQ and show them that there is a real, not only a perceived problem in Pearland. The group that we are working with is a group known as Taxpayers for Environmental Quality. They're also known as TFEQ, Inc. Some of you may have met with some of their members, but we're going to submit the application. We believe this is a great opportunity for us to gather data. In addition to the monitoring equipment, there will also be a recommended study to analyze all of that data and, and bring out information that will show what the issues are. And so our plan is to submit both of those applications on behalf of the city and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. I think the program is a great program. I'll be asked about this tomorrow since I'll be attending the board of directors of the Houston County Area Council and indicate we are looking forward to being the recipient of this at this point. Any further comment from staff on this item? Okay, does council have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I do. With the purchase of some of this air monitor equipment, what, what other costs are going to be associated with that down the line? I mean.
That's an excellent question. Part of the actual cost, the initial upfront cost, will include maintenance and upkeep on that equipment, which will last for approximately five years. There'll be little or no cost to the city of Pearland. The only cost that I anticipate that we might have, let's say there is an emergency situation where we've got weather coming in or we have flooding in the area where maybe some of the temporary monitors for would need to be picked up and relocated and then maybe some battening down the hatches of the weather station itself. But all of it will essentially be taken care of with a maintenance contract that will cost about six thousand dollars a year that's included in with this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question or comment from council?
Yes, Mayor. I appreciate the work that our citizens have gone to create an organization that can apply for this grant. I think it will, it'll go a long way to helping us continue combat an issue that's been out there for a while. You know, obviously, our resources have been depleted. Hopefully, this information will be able to better inform TCEQ as any long-term issues, make the citizens feel comfortable that their voice is being heard. I appreciate all the effort that staff's put towards, towards getting this grant and associating it with, with that effort. And I think it's a necessary and useful effort on our part. So thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you to staff for being able to secure this. And, you know, I, I think these are both win-win projects. I, I don't know that we could put that money to any better use with doing the stations out in Chata Creek Ranch area to help TCEQ to do their job.
Yeah, we always find ourselves with, faced with people inside the city limits and those outside of the city limits who are making our life miserable because of the lack of proper handling of the waste management process. And I think this may be a step in that direction. And I will thank staff for proceeding on this in the manner you have. And I know HCC is looking for, they can help these issues because there's several in the thirteen county, which is what the Houston County Area Council contains, that they're, they're working with a very similar process. So thank you very much for that. Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor here.
Mr. Mayor, this does not require.
This is information, I realize, so but.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, we.
But there's a lot of discussion working here.
Is, I didn't hear any objections, Mr. Mayor, so I think unless I hear any, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the application.
I would like you to proceed with the application. That would be great.
Hundred percent.
Thumbs up across the board. Moving, unless there's further discussion by council, we'll be moving to item number nine. Mayor, council issues for the council discussion, there were none presented for our consideration. Item ten is, is an executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven four for personnel matters regarding appointments to the boards and commissions. Obviously, we can discuss this with individuals that are in the process, that will be attending our meeting. But we cannot make decisions in executive session. But upon return to executive session, this item will be discussed by the council. So we will adjourn to the executive session at, it's like nine o'clock.
Council has returned from executive session at 10:08. Moving in our agenda to consideration possible action regarding appointments to boards and commission, no action will be taken on this item tonight. Moving to item 12, other business, there is none. Item 13 allows me to adjourn this particular session of our city council meetings.